You're in New York City, so I was like, I'm sure I was around it. Live and in person.
We're ready.
All right. Commissioner Foister?
Here.
Commissioner Nelson?
Here.
Liski?
Here. Lisk.
Lisk, sorry.
No worries.
Patrick Sally?
There.
Meyer?
Here.
And Mayor Clark?
Here.
And Sheriff Simont?
Here. Thank you. Uh, we've got two work session items tonight, and then I will read off the first one, and then I'm basically handing it over to Angie, because she is gonna run this show. Um, and the first item is affordable housing work session, discussion about potential language for the Ridgeway municipal code, section 7.7, regarding affordable housing in the community housing guidelines document. And then I'll go ahead and say which the second one is, and then I can hand it over completely. Second item will be master plan review work session, group review and discussion about the 2019 Ridgway master plan, part one introduction, and appendix section, community profile, which we were all supposed to read for this meeting and submit comments. So, it's all you.
We have public audience now.
Thanks, Michelle.
Careful, the boss is here.
Yeah. So I just have some updates relating to the affordable housing policy draft and the guidelines draft. So that went up for a direct referral about a week ago, and we've asked for comments to be submitted by April 9. So we are getting closer to having a version that's ready for adoption consideration. Um, and then just a couple of other, like, housing-related updates. Erie County is gonna be leading a grant application for a Dole Local Planning Capacity Grant to help fund that affordable housing administrator role for the town, city, and county. And then Dole has also released their HPLN grant, which we're hoping to use to fund the regional housing needs assessment, so the regional being town and county. Um, so the cycle is open, and we plan to apply during the first funding round. And that's gonna be a town lead. And then, just a little update on Prop 123 stuff with the 7.7 and guidelines document that you all have in your packet, and that went out to a direct referral. That includes the fast track part that needs to be implemented by a certain date in order to qualify for Prop 123 funding, so we're kinda getting that on track as well. And then to get our draft policy out to the public and be available to answer the questions, we're gonna be hosting a community outreach event on March 27. And allow for you all to attend. It's from 4 to 8 p.m. at the Decker Room, and we'll have some various stations for folks to interact with and leave their feedback uh, with us. Kids input activities, there's gonna be some crafty stuff. Uh, and we're also gonna be using it as an opportunity to celebrate all the good work that Ridgway has already done on workforce and affordable housing. Um, it's gonna be set up as like a mixer-style event, and folks will be encouraged to kinda stroll around, grab a snack, find a topic of interest, and interact with staff, ask questions, then give responses in a variety of formats. So we have like a short digital poll, a sticker voting exercise, sticky notes and scrap paper will be provided for people to leave comments on whatever interests them. Um, and then on the screen is our flyer. I've also printed one for each of you, so if you have a great spot to post it, wonderful, or you can put it on your fridge and remind yourself to attend.
You can put it on the inside, the window of your car, so everybody sees it anytime you drive anywhere. Is there anybody that can't come at some point to that?
I should be able to make it, I might be late, but...
Yeah, there's no late, because it's just kind of a open house style, so there's a normal presentation.
You wanna ask them to amuse yourself?
No, just come and interact with people and ask questions if you have any questions. If there's anything you haven't said here that you wanna write down and stick on a board.
I think it's good for the planning commission to be there.
Oh, yeah.
Do you want us to wear name tags? Uh, I don't think that's necessary, that would be up to staff.
Do you have name tags?
No.
Oh, you could do sticky, yeah, you could get some sticky ones for you.
I'm just asking if that's, if you would like us to...
It's up to you.
Okay.
Hey, cool. Thank you. Um, do you wanna sneak peek, or should I skip that, and you'll just be pleasantly surprised?
What's that?
A sneak peek, or should I skip all that and just be pleasantly surprised?
Completely, actually, I've handed it over.
Okay, maybe I'll just skip through a couple things. Um, kids' activities, I guess I'll stop on this one. This is like a jumble of visualizations that will, that we compile just from various boards that will be at the event. Um, we'll also have like a looped PowerPoint presentation that's gonna cover uh, some of like the basic housing concepts.
Did you say TJ was gonna be there?
TJ and Maxx will both be attending. And so at the various stations, um, we're gonna just dig in a little bit more and provide some more detail beyond the looped presentation. Um, and we'll introduce ideas from the affordable housing regulations and the guidelines document, and then also share our planning timeline for housing, and some information about the upcoming housing needs assessment. So does anybody have any thoughts or questions on that part?
So you'll put it in the paper in the local Facebook page?
Um, I haven't put it in the paper or the local Facebook page, but there's flyers around, it's on the KBNF event calendar.
I'll post one there, I'll land title.
Is it gonna be in the paper?
We do have it in the paper, actually, it's just on.
Make it too.
It's under the Hay Ridge Way category, so it's not like a legal notice or anything, but yeah, it's in the paper. Um, on our website. And...
Uh, out front?
Out front, at the bulletin board and in the closed glass one.
Uh, what about KURI?
I don't know what that is.
That's the local radio in Uray. So...
Yeah, I listen to KBNF, sorry.
Is KURI still on the air? You listen to them regularly?
I thought so.
KBNF is what most people listen to.
Yes, but I just don't, I never wanna miss an opportunity.
Um, the coffee shop?
I'll write it down, and it's posted on the coffee shop.
Great.
Facebook.
Does town have a Facebook page? We don't.
Well, and there is a Facebook page called Ridgway-Uray Residence.
Yeah, but the town would wanna post it, like, it wouldn't come from my personal Facebook page, you know?
Yeah, I don't know how, but anyway, people, I mean, I can take a picture of it and post it on Ridgway Facebook.
That'd be wonderful.
Very. And I was thinking next door is, I don't know, the library is? Yeah, next door.
Next door.
The alley.
Oh.
They have next door, yeah.
No.
It's a regional, it's a local.
That's, I'm like, you mean like at the firehops?
We can post on next door.
Oh, okay. If somebody has next door and wants to post it, that'd be wonderful.
I'll put it on the Jake's Bulletin, I'll land title.
Thank you. All right, so do you wanna jump into some of those master plan review now?
Sure.
Okay. So...
Was that the second item?
It's the second item.
Oh, we're going out of order, okay.
Wait.
No, this is the second.
This, we're moving on to the second item. I don't have anything else for affordable housing. We've looked at the 7.7 and guidelines like four times.
Okay, I thought that was gonna be a more in-depth discussion.
Unless anybody gives any comments on the materials?
Anybody doesn't want theirs, I'll take it.
I can bring the board for you, Jeff.
I just had a comment about subleasing, I wasn't sure if that was included in the rentals.
Um, I can't remember off the top of my head about subleasing, but...
Section on subletting.
Is there something in it that's, that you would like to see removed, or something in it that needs notification?
Well, I was just asking if we were gonna let people sublet, um, renting cars, like, to have a renter, an original tenant, lease it or sublet it to another tenant. And I just had comments. I'm not, but I didn't comment to you and email, so...
Oh, that's okay.
But I can email you.
Okay. Yeah, that'd be great. Unless they wanna, yeah, ask now.
Well, I was just, um, I was kind of against it, but if we were for it, um, I just wanted to make sure that we would have strict guidelines um, of why the tenant was subletting it to other people, and to make sure that they weren't doing it um, for the money, that it'd be for specific reasons. Yeah. Because I would hate to see, um, people renting and then renting it to somebody else for more money. And then that makes the rent go up.
Yeah, I think they're, I think that's kind of covered in it, but it might also be related to the specific deed restriction and how that's handled in there. Um, but I think generally we allowed it, just because we want somebody to be occupying long-term all the housing that exists.
Yes.
Um, but yeah, there'd have to be like strict requirements about their qualifications, and then also what they could charge for rent. I don't know. So I don't think they would be able to make money on the subletting. But we can make that like a little more clear or firm in the documents.
Okay.
Good idea. Anybody else have anything on the housing portion?
You know, um, I actually ended up wondering whether it would be feasible to, uh, to make, uh... How to say this, if it were, if it would be feasible to have a, uh, an element of voluntary, uh, community housing. In other words, something, what struck me in this, in that, uh, little community housing thing is everything is deed restricted. And I'm wondering if it would be feasible to have a program of, of, of voluntary rentals uh, for community, uh, people's stuff. Uh, yeah, that's, in other words, it's, it would be more temporary, uh, but could quite possibly be useful. Um, and, uh, with some community-minded people who have rentals, but who don't want to have perpetual deed restrictions.
Well, it's kind of prerogative to do that at any time, but there are programs that exist in other communities, like Summit County has a lease-to-locals program. Um, so would you be suggesting that there would be some sort of incentive for local homeowners to lease?
Simply to have it be available, uh, so to speak. Uh, in other words, uh, it, it would be less bonus for the owner to, uh, you know, to sign up, uh, to rent to qualified people. Not putting it on them.
I see, so, so the people they'd be renting to would have, we would still do their review and check, and it'd basically just be more tracking on the town side, but there wouldn't necessarily be an incentive tied to it, encouraging people to do that.
Legal obligation.
Right.
For them to continue that in perpetuity.
Got it, yeah, so for tracking purposes and to keep it, yeah, that's interesting, yeah, it's a good thought.
Here's a funny thing, in Tyrod, at one of the local restaurants, The Butcher and the Baker, they have a big sign up in the front, and it says that if you rent to a local, you can skip the line. You're like a golden customer, you're allowed to go to the front of the line whenever you come there to the restaurant.
And somebody's obviously trying to...
And you order like at the counter, you know, that's the kind of restaurant it is, so everyone has to wait in line, yeah, that's their rule. Yeah.
That's cool. I'd like feedback, thank you. All right, master plan review, are we all ready to jump into this? Okay, so thank you, everybody, for your participation in that. Um, did everyone feel like it was an okay workload, and that they had enough time?
Yeah.
Comments back, okay, cool. Um, so as a reminder, this is just our process here. So today I'm gonna give an overview of the parts that we did for individual review and planner's assessment, um, as part of our group review. And then I'll point out some particularly telling trends and shifts, um, so we can have some discussion. And then I'll assign the next portion for individual review. So there was definitely some favorite aspects of the sections that we reviewed. Um, in part one, introduction, first of all, it does a nice job of being concise, which is always appreciated. The live scribed poem received a lot of praise from everyone, um, in the individual review. And then I made a few notes in my assessment that any sort of creative inputs like this make the plan feel a lot richer, and it helps capture Ridgway in a very unique way. Um, so just for any future updates, anything we can do to encourage more of that is awesome. Uh, that includes like the photos, for example, so hiring a local photographer to capture some of the community outreach events, uh, when it comes time to do the update would be important, and also paying people for their professional photographs that are locals, um, to grace the pages of an update would be advisable. And then community engagement was another part that was covered in this, so um, it should be just as robust, if not more robust, than what happened in 2018, 2019. And just to note that if the Department of Local Affairs was to fund the 2026 update, um, they'd wanna see our approach to an equitable community outreach, uh, or to equitable community outreach, and that should always be the goal, anyway. So, we all noted that a lot has happened since the adoption of the 2019 master plan. So first, there have been huge shifts due to the global pandemic. Um, there's more reliance on digital form and social media, staying connected virtually, work-from-home opportunities, et cetera. Um, we've also seen a lot of beautiful places become more popular, have a lot more visitation. And then because of the work-from-home option, um, people can now live in Ridgway and work for a company all over the world, anywhere in the world. Uh, we've also seen costs increase, especially housing costs, and...
Other question?
Yeah.
It's more in theory, but I would guess if you're living in Ridgway and working remotely somewhere else, and you're making more money than you would work, you would make here, that's gonna increase the AMI?
Mm-hmm. Yep, definitely. Um, and I'm gonna pull up some data to, to show you guys what's been happening. So, the impacts have kind of trickled down, and there's been a lot of, um, strategies to address these impacts, and they've made it into like regional, state, and local priorities. So this page is kind of a call-out of some of the documents that articulate these priorities, and there's a lot of overlapping priorities, workforce housing, water supply, affordability. Um, those are all like regional statewide concerns that we're battling. And then, on this page is showing the roadmap 2026, it was published in 2023, but it's a statewide plan. And the six main priorities are decreasing housing costs and increasing supply, streamlining processes to save time and money, supplying access to more transit options, um, improving air quality, enhancing water, open space, and neighborhood quality, and supporting local businesses, creatives, and community revitalization.
I think the hardest one is gonna be lowering housing costs.
Yeah.
Seems like we're not doing very good at creating housing either.
Yeah. Um, but a lot of what this turned into then is the funding that we're seeing for the housing needs assessment, for the fast track program, for Prop 123. So, um, but it, yeah, it informs what we're up to as well, so they've been funding, they've been supplying funding in smaller local governments. So, um, I also thought it was kind of important to call out this planning resource that's developed annually. It's called the Trend Report for Planners, and it explains some of the current trends, um, and indicates if something needs an action, like an urgent action. Um, they classify the trends into three categories, act now, prepare, and learn and watch. And interestingly, uh, some of the act now trends included some of the points that we all made in our individual review. So, I'll just reach through the whole list, and you can consider which you commented on. Uh, shifting climate mitigation strategies, the new average, which is demographics and housing needs, digital fatigue, changing lifestyles from heat, wildfire, and air pollution, um, the evolving needs of public spaces, and water at risk, global change, local consequences. And then regionally, Uray adopted their community plan in 2021. Uray County adopted their master plan revision last month, and both of these documents can help us ensure that any, uh, of our plans kind of work together, at least acknowledge these newer plans. And then one of my comments in the planner assessment was just to, um, add some more regional context. And I do really love how like Ridgway our master plan is, but, um, as collaboration becomes more and more key, uh, I think it's good to just have some more regional context in there. Just connect it in the plan update.
Who was responsible for putting the last one together?
The last master plan?
Yeah.
Basically, um, Clarion.
Clarion.
Clarion is a pretty well-renowned, up and out of Denver.
Uh-huh.
That does planning. They, they ran, they have the contract. They did a great job.
They did a good, yeah, they do a great job.
So is that something we would do in the future, or we do it in-house?
Um, I guess it depends on what comes out of this review, how much needs to be updated.
Um, we did a full update, we contracted, but if we think we can do a kind of minimal update, I think we can do it.
Yeah, so that's kind of what we're establishing with all these review meetings. Okay, so I forgot, this is PDF. So here's a list of some other plans and studies that was also in your packet, um, that have been completed since the 2019 adoption of the master plan. There's also a newly adopted regional hazard mitigation plan, evacuation plan, that the county emergency manager is the lead on. And then we, let's see. Oh, my suggestion for these was just that, uh, an overview of the individual documents should be performed to see which pieces need to be brought into a master plan update. Um, obviously that takes a lot of time and effort, but TJ has suggested that we use AI to perform this overview or summary of the documents, so we'll see if that's something we present you with.
It's worth the screaming, then.
Yeah, it saves a ton of... Certainly. Um, okay. So, as part of the, our review, we also reviewed the appendix section, community profile. And listed here are the various profile elements that are covered in that section. And I'm gonna spend most of our group review going over the data in this section and see how that shifted, uh, mainly related to demographics, growth and development, housing, and then some of the economic factors. So I didn't really dive into like parkland, parks and recreation, um, transportation, natural environment, or municipal governance. Um, I guess one thing to note is, we need for 2026 a recreation and tourism element added to the master plan, so that'll just be its own thing that needs to develop. I haven't like told you what needs to be in it at this stage. Hopefully that helps. Um, so I guess I just have a little, one little note on data. So we can never really expect the data to be perfect, and, um, some of the data is only available at the county level. So American Community Survey data, that's estimates, they're based on a sample and not a complete count. Uh, so they do have a margin of error that's, can sometimes be very significant. So I just, as we go through this data, I want you to take it all with a grain of salt. Um, also, 2020 was our last decennial census, so every 10 years, that's when they're trying to do a complete count, and it should be more accurate, but 2020 was obviously amid a global pandemic, so I have heard some criticisms about the accuracy of the data from 2020. So just to keep that in mind. Um, this first slide is just showing you some of the growth projections, so that you were created for the county, um, and then you can see in the graph or the table on the right that in 2022, the estimate was pretty much met for, um, how many people are gonna be living in Uray County. And then here's another way to look at that information. Uh, this is from Elliot's thing, Economies of Place, when he did our, um... It's skipping my mind right now.
Land use.
Our land use mix, what is it called?
Nature.
Economies of Place. When he did our implications of land use.
Inventory zoning?
Yeah. Yep. Okay, so this shows some of the forecasted, again, uh, population. Keep in mind right here, the Uray County is the remainder, so you would add those two together. And something that I pointed out in the planner's assessment, um, in the introduction, it talks about the rate of growth, explaining that from 2000 to 2008, there was 239 new residential units added to the stock in town. And then 2009 to 2017, there was only 67 new residential units added. So I tallied up 2018 to 2024, and there were 138 new residential units added at the, during that timeframe. That does include ADUs. So if we're considering new residents occupying those units, then this line is probably a little steeper. Um, so we wanted to go off of like average household size, which is like 1.94 right now. Uh, it means that we've added housing for about 275 people in a span of six years. So that is about 45 people a year. Pretty significant. Forty-five people. And then what drives the growth that we're seeing, uh, mostly it's migration to the area. So on this graph, uh, net migration is depicted here in orange, and then, um, births are in dark blue, deaths are in light blue. And this data is only available at the county level, keep that in mind. But this is a continuation of that data to 2022. So you can see the large gray spikes are indicating net migration. Um, so this was an estimation that about 150 to 175 people in the years 2016, 2019, and 2021.
What happened in 2016?
What's that?
What happened in your previous slide? What happened in 2016?
I don't know. People were building?
I can't.
Was there a significant building development, or?
But I don't remember anything that drove that.
If we, I know the module's a track where the, uh, the growth comes from, you, you, you walk in, you walk in.
You mean where people are moving from?
Yeah, like Montrose is 30 years historically, Jordan, intrastate.
Right.
Versus interstate.
Yeah, that is, that is a census data that's tracked, um, probably at the county level, I don't know that it would be.
I don't think we're the same, but I'm just curious.
Yeah, I don't have a slide for that, but I can kind of look into it.
Just, I mean, the majority has always been from both. I just, I mean, the majority has always been from Boulder, Denver. And, yeah, um, a lot of, honestly, I'm really the same, but I'm just, I, I just find it fascinating.
Yeah.
I think that's very true.
Maybe it was the streetscapes. Was that twenty sixteen? Maybe that's why people.
Yes, yeah.
Actually, it wasn't.
Just take, alright.
Good question.
Okay. So. Just some other interesting trends. The median age is younger than the county. Um, is that forty eight? It was at forty eight in twenty sixteen as well. Uh, but we're still significantly older than Colorado as a whole. So something interesting to keep in mind. Um, households, like just households, how they're set up is shifting quite a bit. Um, so we can see here in two thousand, sixty seven percent were classified as households. Or as family households. And then in twenty sixteen, only forty seven were classified as family households. So. Um, let me explain a little bit better what this means. So, uh, twenty twenty three, the data is now estimated that only forty percent are family households. And. How it's classified, if you're non-family, is there's. Um, non-family living alone, and then there's non-family living with others. So this could represent that there's a strong need for like. Roommates, like a roommate household because of affordability issues. Um, it could also potentially have something to do with like the ADU units. Like, I really don't know how. I'm not, I'm not totally clear on which category people would fall into if they're living alone in an ADU on a property. That's occupied by other people that aren't their family. So that's something that. Would be looked into, like these, these nuances of the data with any plan update.
It's interesting that the family percentage went down. I, I assumed that it would looking at that. Yeah. You hear about it, that there's less, less people are having children.
And the household size has.
Short as well.
Yeah. So kind of interesting. Um. Let's see. So twenty twenty three ACS data says that out of. The estimated six hundred and forty three housing units that are occupied. Three hundred and fifty four of them are owner occupied. Um, meaning that about fifty five percent of housing units are owner occupied. Which is an increase from this data from twenty sixteen, which shows that forty seven percent were owner occupied. So this could mean a number of things. Um. This also points out like the type of housing units. And I wouldn't really pay attention to that here because again, like ADUs are becoming a lot more popular and pervasive. Between when this data was collected and when. Um. We got that. Or since this data was collected, so. Um, also. I think we probably all expected the median housing home values to be kind of extreme. So. It shows. Twenty sixteen data set us at three hundred and sixty eight. Thousand and now the median value is about six hundred and seventy seven thousand. Uh, another interesting shift here was just that. Um, Ridgway. Median value has now surpassed, or over surpassed. Uray County's median home value, which was higher. In twenty sixteen. That could have to do with like that, uh, land value or whatever. I'm not sure.
Big lots.
Yeah, bigger lots, exactly. Right. But now Ridgway is more expensive, so. And then, not to depress everyone, this is a quick look at what was posted on Zillow. For sale today. Not much, but also really high numbers. Um. So I don't have any details about square footage or anything like that. I didn't want to go, go there with Zillow data. Um. But if anybody wants me to. Some other time.
Yeah.
I'll probably be crying at my computer screen.
What's that address next to North Park?
I've, I've already, I've already done that.
Square footage. I don't know. I can't click it. It's just a screenshot of the. Oh, this has two units. So it doesn't have a, an amount. It's just showing that there's two units, for example. I think that's the firehouse units that were listed.
Probably what's.
Oh, okay. Yeah, yeah.
Yep, yep, yep. What's the, the bubbles that are north?
Um.
One of the, it's probably the unaffordable housing.
Just, what does that say? I can't.
Nine hundred ninety nine thousand.
Yes, the unaffordable.
That's across the street from me.
Yeah.
Hey, well.
Such good news.
Sorry. There's some good news. Well, I don't know. It's good. Some news is coming. Um, okay. There's also been a creep up of rent, which is not surprising. So median rent is one thousand three hundred and thirty six dollars.
I have not seen anything for that.
Yeah.
I see the net slide. My rise increased, um, more percentage wise. Than Ridgway.
Probably. Yeah. Um, so this is the screenshot from Zillow showing the rentals available. And they're all, most of them are like. Two point five. Okay. So again, greedy day high. At the same time, um. Wages are increasing, median household income is increasing. So it was listed as fifty five K in twenty sixteen estimates. And now is at about eighty eight K.
But like I said, I believe that's from outside influences. That's not because salaries gone up considerably in Ridgway. It's because people had the tier that can work remotely.
Probably true. Um.
And one of the things I learned when I lived in Jackson Hole is it, it was crazy high. But it wasn't, the wealth wasn't earned income. It wasn't people working nine to five on a job, eight to five. It was other income, which inflated everything.
Mm-hmm.
But it wasn't the median worker.
Yeah, yeah.
Maybe like investment income touched them?
Yeah, property and other things.
I do have a couple of slides about like the industries that are.
Oh, yeah.
Popular and stuff. But anyways, this is hourly wages. Um. It was listed as like nineteen dollars an hour in Uray County in twenty sixteen. And now it's at about twenty four dollars. So this is the industry data I was mentioning. Um. So there has been some shifts, but it's really hard to say. Exactly. I, you know, it could have to do with something as small as one business closing to make a big shift. So this is for Uray County. Um. What I've noticed in comparing these two charts from twenty sixteen and twenty twenty two. Is that the upward trending industries are real estate and rental leasing. Education, healthcare and social assistance, arts, entertainment and recreation. And professional and technical services. And then, uh, staying pretty consistent is construction. And then some of the variable, like super variable up and down industries include accommodation and food service, agriculture. Mining and manufacturing. And then some of the downward or the shrinking trend. Um, include government and public sector, finance and insurance and retail. So I don't know if you all see that or find that to be accurate.
Just to back up a little, at twenty four dollars an hour, I just did the math quickly. That's like fifty thousand a year. If your business doesn't close for a month. Or any such thing, um, where you're not getting paid. So at the average medium income in Ridgway, you can't afford to live in Ridgway.
Yep. Where you starting? Great. And then a lot of you commented on commuting. You thought that was pretty shocking from your individual review. So. On this slide has the twenty sixteen data and then I have showed you this before, um, when we. Just looked at housing data in general. And this is showing an overlap section. So that's the people that live and work in Ridgway. So that's only fifty six individuals according to this. Um. And then here in twenty, I guess twenty fifteen, sorry about that. It's showing seventy six individuals. So the Ridgway residents that work in Ridgway. So it's actually decreasing.
Hmm.
Um. Hey, this graphic is bad. I'm really sorry about that. I didn't make it. I do know the BBC people, so I might know who made it. Anyways, uh, I'm gonna just talk about it because I did a little bit of digging in our budgets. So. The changes in sales tax revenue, the twenty nineteen plan said nearly doubled since two thousand nine. And then the twenty nineteen sales tax revenue was about nine hundred and fourteen K. Um, the twenty twenty five budget reported. Uh, the twenty twenty three actual sales tax revenue at one million six hundred and eighty five thousand and five hundred dollars. And then it planned conservatively for one million three hundred and fifty thousand dollars in sales tax revenue for twenty twenty five. So. Certainly just continuing to grow. Okay, so I did a little bit of a summary of the main points that we all noted in the individual. Review and planner's assessment. Which are on the screen. Uh, I thought we could just kind of talk about these and see if everyone agrees that this captures, captures the key considerations for these plan sections. Um. So first, maintenance of small town character was a big. Uh, thing that was commented on. Because everyone seems to be noticing more traffic, more construction. Uh, more businesses that don't cater directly to locals. So they're not providing locals with goods and services that are needed. Um. Does that seem fair?
I question the more businesses that don't cater to local needs.
And what is?
I can't even think of any.
Yeah, what would then, what would one of those be?
Like a new business that locals don't. Use.
Like I can think of that one over next to True Grett. It's like a. Gift shop or something?
Yeah, that's not specifically for locals if you.
No, no. But otherwise, there's not a whole lot I can think of.
The grocery store.
Doesn't.
Nice, nice. Seriously, those are businesses that support locals. Or maybe some other options would be if there was like a furniture store.
But I'm saying like the grocery store, uh, the funny part was it doesn't support locals because a lot of local people don't go there because the prices are so steep.
So it might be like a, an interior design business.
Right, but I'm saying I don't think that's happened here.
Well, I think the rematch building kind of shows that where we had a pharmacy and they couldn't afford it. And then it was, um, a dog grooming place and they couldn't afford it, but they were really busy. But now it's busy bee bait place. And I'm like. Who, who's gonna go there as a midway?
Okay. Yeah, that would be a good example is there's quite a few of pot shops.
Yeah, it's a pot shop. It's not a low accessory. It's a hedge.
I would imagine there's probably some locals that frequent it, but I bet that they don't keep it in business.
Yeah, but it's like all that's for retail. If you're selling widgets to tourists, is that really a local, they serve the locals? So it's simple, it's a, a, all type of retail, the retail on Ridgway. Probably isn't retail directed to resident, to locals. It's more tourist oriented. Hardware would be. Hardware, hardware. Definitely is. Yeah.
Yeah, but that's a good point because how much is our locals really, besides for hardware? Retail, how much are locals really buying? Probably not that much.
It's, it's. It's tourist oriented, I don't think.
It's complicated. I mean, like if you compare, say. Kane Gallery with six ten next to Sherbinow. Six ten does a lot of local business. People go in there to buy reading cards and gifts and things. Kane's Gallery. It doesn't get a lot of local.
Uh huh.
So I think it's, it's more complicated than just saying that, you know, gift shops aren't for locals. Not that anybody was necessarily saying that.
Right, right.
Clearly.
That was a good example.
Um. So, I mean, I just think it's, it's complicated.
I think retail is, is, is hard to define. You know, because the retail's got to be diverse. So they, they, if there was a good retail store that's stuck, carries stuff for locals and for tourists, you know.
I think most of our retail stores try to do that.
Yeah, they should.
Now, what about services?
I'm wondering if working remotely or businesses remotely come into that. That's, that was my knee jerk reaction. Those people that start businesses and work remotely are not catering to locals.
Hmm.
That's for sure.
That was my, my first intuitive sense when you said that. It was.
But of course, they're not paying local sales tax.
They could be. Uh, they could, I don't, probably not, but they could be. They're selling widgets or. Amazon stuff.
So. It's what you were saying, started this conversation, you don't necessarily agree that there are more businesses that don't cater to locals needs?
Yeah, I was having trouble thinking of what they are, but I think that people gave some good examples.
Maybe this could be worded better. So are there less businesses that cater to local needs?
That's, that's great.
Yeah. Yeah, yeah, alright. Yeah, um. I don't think it's calling out the new businesses necessarily, but. I think that it's pointing out that some businesses that were popular. Can't afford to do business here.
Yeah, yeah, I would agree.
Even though they were catering to local needs.
Oh, yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, I always wondered if the pharmacy could have survived if they were in a smaller space.
Well, it was really a funny situation because for a moment we had two pharmacies.
Yeah.
All at the same time. And it was like.
Yeah.
But then the one promptly went away, not because of a lack of business. It was, it was, uh, internal issues.
Um.
Um, and then the one, I believe, over there left because of the rent.
Right.
The, the one that rematch left because of?
Yeah, yeah, yes.
I'd, I'd heard that that was more of an issue of not being able to have pharmacists who could lose. I thought, I thought Stacy's left because I still did business with them in Montrose. And I thought they left because of employee issues is what, what I was told. It wasn't, I wasn't told right now. I would have thought they would have told me that. They were having trouble.
Probably both.
Uh, probably both, yeah. I agree.
But that was nice to have that here.
Those families.
Yeah. Alright, um, the other point, strategic growth. So planning for some capital improvements as the town grows. Um, that's going to become more and more crucial. Especially, as I think you all pointed out, relating to water supply, drainage and streets.
I was just thinking when you said about how much sales tax has gone up. That if that grocery store had happened way back when, right? Because of the increased sales tax, like probably all the streets in Ridgway would be paved by now. Which I'm not in favor of, right? I'm not saying that's a good thing.
Really. I mean.
It wouldn't have been that much.
Not enough to be, it's millions and millions of dollars to, to the streets. I mean, certainly would have been more sales next, but.
And anyways.
Wouldn't have shown the code.
The, uh, the, uh, the goods and the bads, right? Like I don't think the paved streets are necessarily a good thing.
And in the master plan, people did not want the town paved. They only wanted the commercial areas.
Good. I agree.
And that was pretty strong opinion.
Still.
Yeah. A neighbor who strongly disagrees.
Um, of course, housing needs, we talk about it all the time. Affordability challenges make it really hard to live here. And then the housing crisis makes it nearly impossible.
It's, it's just, it's just so complicated. You know, like I was on the Housing Authority entire, I, thirty years ago, and we're like. We're already behind, you know, we're not, you know, nobody wanted to be the next, uh, Aspen, but. Uh, no matter how much you build, like there's more people that want to live there and, and there's the free market that you can't control. And it's just. I don't. It's so hard. We'll be discussing this for the rest of our lives.
Yeah, the housing crisis is nationalized.
Right, it's not just a small town thing.
Yeah, it's in Austin, it's in Dallas, it's everywhere.
Well, I was reading an article saying that. Part of it was the housing bust and people quit building housing for a while. And then we're suddenly behind, behind, behind.
That's why I keep, I get complaints to me about this project down on the highway. Like. We need more housing. First thing you have to do when you have a housing crisis is build more inventory. You may not like that, but it's more in between. Don't buy it. Um, so that's.
And with, with the tariffs coming, housing is going to become more expensive to build.
Let's not go there.
I'm just saying, it's not going.
It's not, they're not doing anything to fix it.
No, and it's been going on, I mean, Steamboat in nineteen seventy six, it was a problem. It's always going to be a problem regardless of where we are.
Here's to be able to get it.
I think John's right, it's a national problem.
Yeah.
It's, yeah. I think we're addressing a lot of people, aren't even addressing.
Yeah, there's a lot of data on it. Like there's just certainly not enough houses for the number of people.
Yeah, well, and then the, with, with construction costs going up. I mean, I just did an analysis and the, the last five or six houses in Ridgway, sales price was under three hundred and fifty dollars a foot. But yet we're selling stuff across the street under contract at five hundred dollars, but they haven't closed yet. So.
Three hundred and fifty. I'm comparing four hundred is more. We're seeing three fifty.
Everything, everything in River Park and the last, last four house. Everything, everything in River Park and the la- last four house, last five houses that sold in Ridgeway were under three sixty a foot. And nothing, all these fireplaces haven't closed yet. We just did this last week.
That sounds amazing.
Yeah, there's a huge jump that's coming that hasn't happened.
No, but you're still finding anything at three sixty?
There's a house right down the street from, right down the street from me, twenty-one square feet is under contract for three hundred and forty dollars a foot. In River Park, nice house.
Yeah.
Twelve years old.
I'm surprised.
And it hasn't closed yet, but, uh, and this is a phenomenon that I studied. I mean, so we're under four hundred dollars a foot, and then pretty soon we're gonna jump to over five hundred, this is, they close. And so some of the other stuff closes. Stuff across from us is about four hundred bucks a foot. When that house closes, it's gonna be a jump.
Yeah.
Big jump.
Like the issue with Mr. Commons is. The square footage is huge, but that's because there's, you know, twenty structures, but they still have to pay for all the infrastructure. You know, as, as if they were, that's a fixed cost. Whether you build, you know, you can't, you can't spread it out very far on twenty houses.
I've been trying to get information on their sales, just for this board and for knowledge, and it, it seems like they've got five or six under contract, nothing's closed. I don't think they have a final plot yet.
Several have closed.
Several have closed?
Oh, yeah, there's people living in them. Yeah.
Okay, it must have happened since I checked.
No, no, exactly. There's something on them.
There, it's all done?
Yeah.
And I need to check again, that's. You know, that might be the telluride I know this.
No, it's.
I think under loss of businesses, we have to also put something in there about the. Unending need to, to have a diverse, more diverse economy, not putting all our eggs in two's basket. I guess that a lot of. It might be a lot of the cause of the loss of businesses is that since COVID and, and the kind of boom there. There was this big leap in, in tourism related businesses, and that's just not where you wanna put all your eggs. So I think we need to continue to stress the need for a diverse economy, small, small, light industrial kinds of things. My example's always been if we could somehow get somebody like Black Diamond or Patagonia to build an R and D facility here. Hire, you know, fifty people and build housing for them, that, that'd be.
I lived in Salt Lake when they came.
Yeah.
But we had just enough infrastructure in the city to support that.
Right.
Airports, materials, things like that.
Well, what I, I think we're going for us now that we have to really figure out how to market better is the quality of life. Since COVID, quality of life is.
Can share my screen? All right, sorry to interrupt your discussion. You got disconnected for a second.
Well, I think with that, with that thought gone, we don't really have an economic development committee. You know, we lost, we lost three real big employers since I've lived here to Montrose because of their economy. We lost the, we lost the York Company, we lost Grady's Trust Co., which all were, you know, double digit employees. And, oh, oh, I understand that you'd like to attract those type of people, but we, we don't. Other than a nice website, we don't really solicit that. I mean, it's, and I don't, this is not a negative against us. It's almost impossible to keep competing with Montrose cuz they have so much to offer them.
Right.
And like hard cash.
Yep.
And we probably have a better lifestyle and a better environment, but we have much higher cost of housing. And, but they, I mean, they, uh, there's restaurants, they enter town of, the city of Montrose, just financed their hundred fifty thousand dollar kitchen. Their new location in Mayfly. That's huge.
The daily bread building?
No, the, uh, the, the Italian place. And she had a low interest loan from Montrose Development from the city.
Uh, to, and.
Yeah, Montrose is.
The one they're doing chocolate?
Compete with all my two Montrose systems.
It's, it's, so, I mean, that's, that's a reality for us that we should recognize. It's hard for us. Maybe we can team up with them somehow. Well, maybe there's, I, I would think there's some economic development money out there that we should probably court. I mean, I would, to create jobs and through Region Ten or something like that, but. We're, I think we could do that.
Or ask Region Ten.
I mean, this board can do that. I mean, some, we need to think about that, but.
Or work with Region Ten and say, hey, you know, how do we help you solicit? And support small businesses that would wanna come here.
Yeah, I think, you know, that we can have a work session on that, just to brainstorm, but we don't have to do that tonight, but. Um. I think we need to, as a community, offer more to solicit job creators.
Agreed.
I mean, we, we have a lot, but we don't have cash.
Right.
Right, that's the one thing you know.
And I think, uh, excuse me, they, they have these economic zones and business zones in Montrose. I don't think we have those here, we, where you could, if you bought a piece of real estate, started a business, you keep it for five years, you sell it, there's no tax. And those zones are two or three in Montrose. We need to focus on one way at a time. There's things that we can do.
Yeah.
We need to figure out a way to help create our jobs here.
Well, that ties in perfectly to the master plan update, I think, and also just. The general collaboration and maybe reaching beyond the borders of just Ridgeway.
Yeah.
Um.
Thank you for all the opportunities.
We lost your screen.
Sorry. Thank you for telling me. I wouldn't have noticed.
You hadn't, so.
Yeah. Um. Next couple of things on here have to do with, uh, just the goods and services that you all pointed out, um, in transit. So senior care, childcare, medical care, portable groceries are all generally out of town. Um. So that obviously plays into your transit as well. And. Our emphasis on walking and biking is wonderful in town, uh, but it does only get you so far. And we're seeing some increased transit options. So some limited tran- transit options popping up. Um, and then just as town is developing, something to keep in mind is just this idea of like human scale versus vehicle scale. And I think Ridgeway is definitely very walkable and the buildings are like a size that's appropriate for. Pedestrian activity all around, and it's not like, you know, you don't feel like you're in a, you know.
Mall.
Yeah, a concrete jungle.
But it's basically kind of from the bridge over, like beyond the bridge.
Right, the, the intersections or the crossings of the highways are definitely.
Um, are just walking out that way, even towards the fairgrounds, it's like, kind of feels like no man's land.
Well, I see a lot of people cross the bridge over the younger body. That was, that pedestrian bridge that.
Mm-hmm.
Cliffed, it's huge, can't really connect. Now, I don't think we're ever gonna get beyond highway.
Somehow we have to connect the east side, though.
Uh, you know, it's all about whether the funding keeps happening. There, we, now that we have this, um, Riverfront Village. We actually have the potential to do an underpass over to the.
Huge.
That'd be great, a great thing.
Um. So that's what I always dreamed of, but.
I'd also really like to see, um, for pedestrian stops, just all four sides, all four directions stop. And not.
Boy, would people complain with that. I know, I hear you.
As we have more and more people living over there, you know, I walk a lot over and I'm like, oh boy. Especially with kids.
Yeah.
There's a lot of kids over there.
Very unsafe. What? It's very unsafe.
Yeah, yeah. I just think it should be a full four-way stop. And yes, I would love a bridge right.
What's that, you mean, the two highways or four-way stop?
The, having the stoplights go red on all four directions.
For pedestrians.
Yeah. Yeah, just a full-on.
Stop.
It's nerve, I don't know, I didn't like crossing that.
See, I never do that.
I don't. And I, I, my guess is that it wouldn't be as safe as you might think, because people would get frustrated and, and think that the lights were broken. It'd go anyway.
One, you've got the turn on red, right turn on red thing.
Right. Anyway, another, another rabbit hole.
Yeah, I think it's all, all important.
Under transit, it's safety.
Yeah, it's, it's comprehensive, so it's good to talk about all these things. Um. We already talked about work from home. We don't exactly know how it's changing things in town, but we can guess, um. Uh, what else? There's just been other intense economic shifts from COVID nineteen that.
Are all noticing?
Well, I think the California fires and the stuff that, the, the stuff that happened in, uh. Tennessee and North Carolina is gonna increase that by COVID. I, I think it's gonna be impossible to get insurance. I mean, I've had my insurance canceled in Ridgeway. I have friends that have insurance. Insurance is gonna become a huge issue, especially in California.
The condos that went way up.
It's gonna be almost like an insurance migration.
Um, under public spaces, I think, you know, we've been really good about children's spaces. Safe places for them to play, but I'd also like to see a focus on. Just places to sit.
Mm-hmm.
You know, as we all become so busy and we're like looking for a quiet place to just. Sit and enjoy and breathe outside without having to be locked up at home. It's like more comfortable benches. Well, or benches in general. Bents and picnic tables scattered about and just quiet places to sit, like we've got those funky, uh, benches, but they face the road. And it's like, I really need to be looking at trees, not cars. Um, you know, I wish there were more public places to sit at Hartwell Park. Um, and anytime we develop any more green space, I think we just need to have. Places to just chill.
It seems like the bench thing could happen sooner than later in the park here.
Yeah. You're even just turn them around. I mean.
They do need more benches because during the farmer's market, it's really hard to find some places to sit.
Yeah.
Or, you know, if, if I'm just walking through town running errands, it's like. No, I would just sit in Hartwell Park or any park, um. Down by the creek, the river, um, you just need a place to park yourself. And slow down and breathe.
Nice.
Yeah, and, um. Just a couple of other trends that are happening with public spaces, uh. Pickleball. Pickleball's taking over.
Yeah.
Uh, there's just a lot more shifting, like people want wifi in parks, which we obviously have, and we. Seems like Ridgeway has, uh, catered to a lot of those needs and desires for public spaces. Um, someone pointed out something I thought was really important, that open space should serve humans and nature, wildlife. Um, so keeping that in mind. As we develop. And then, of course, climate threats, uh, came up in everyone's. Review, I think, uh, almost everyone's, um. Yeah, some of these things just really warrant attention now. There's a lot of fear about, you know, worsening storms. Heat waves, drought, threats of fire, insurance, air and water quality.
Insurance.
Um, yeah, and then we have that huge infrastructure damage at Beaver Creek diversion and. There's just a focus on needing to build redundancy into our systems to just be more resilient. And so planning for any of the capital improvements, um, that build resiliency will be important. And of course, just because of what we saw in California, I think, is what alerted me to this issue is that. Once a, a fire is actively happening, it doesn't mean that you're gonna have access to your water, to the battle line, so. Kind of scary.
So you should have an in-ground pool.
But the. I just wanted to mention something about strategic growth.
Mm-hmm.
And I know, I see that you have those streets there, but I just wanted to put out there that. The more traffic we have, um, going down Main Street, it's, I think, at some point, we're gonna have. To plan. And I know we've talked about this several times in the past about diverting traffic somewhere else and not through the town. Because, um, we have issues with the streets and this, and putting stoplights in and trying to get onto the main highway.
There's no place to.
I know, and so how to.
I think it's possible.
Yeah, but we have to think about how that's gonna work with street lights being put out on the streets. Or, um, and if we can't divert traffic, how, how can we deal with more traffic through town?
Yeah.
I don't know, I. That's, that's a good question, but I think at a certain point. Well, two things, I think, within the next two or three decades, we won't be able to drive as many one-person vehicles around as we, as we do now. And. Second is that, that, if it becomes just gridlock. Because somehow the traffic just does get to the point where Telluride traffic and Montrose traffic just takes over, then. The only thing we can do is have more stoplights, um. I mean, I've always thought that eventually we'll have a second stoplight at Rower Street at some point, or Lena. Nobody wants to think about that.
Probably Laura.
I think.
Years ago, there was talk of a, a bypass, and it's, there's no way that could happen now, I don't think. I mean. Carrer twenty-four is the only.
Yeah.
Even closest possibility. There's no way people live out there.
So we would have to collaborate with like C-Dot, um, better than we do now.
C-Dot decides to do something, I don't know that we have much say, do we, John?
Oh, we do, somewhat, but, but. But you're right, I mean, C-Dot is, they, they, uh. Certainly are above us in the hierarchy, um, but we have a pretty good relationship with them, and it's getting better all the time, so. You know, I, but, I don't know, that, that is such a. Future worry that I think we know we can't even.
Well, and Telluride had those issues, they ended up with.
Buying the red.
Buying it, um, and now they're responsible for it because they couldn't put the bike path in cuz it was too close of regulation wise, the bike pass was too close to the highway. So they couldn't put the bike path in and they couldn't lower the speed limit on the spur. And so they went entered into agreement with the state and they bought, they bought it, and in the end the state gave them money to take it. But I can't remember, it was like fifty or a hundred thousand, certainly not, that's long gone.
Yeah, but that wasn't during the end, I mean.
They're responsible to pay for that.
That's what I was gonna say, it's.
No, we're not gonna be able to buy it, but I'm saying that they have a lot of regulations, that it doesn't matter what you want, it's, it's, you know, the state regulations.
Yeah, I, I think that's, I mean, it's a good question, but we're not gonna. We're not.
I think, I think Wayne is addressing that, and we might be going in the weeds here, but is to have better act, I mean, everybody goes out to sixty-two. And we all go that way. If we had a better way out. A secondary access out, maybe past the school, maybe through Eagle Hill, maybe through, um.
That just goes back to twenty-four, which is never gonna.
No, no, it could go out through, uh, through, uh, the Weaver subdivision. There's a couple other alternatives there that we've ignored. So.
What do you mean, using a road that doesn't exist yet?
The road's there, but there's a gate.
Another road, go through Eagle Hill and go through Dennis Weaver subdivision, there's a bridge.
I just can't. Anyway, we're getting in the weeds, I don't think we can ever.
Yes.
Finish this discussion tonight, but.
Well. In the community profile, there were twelve questions that were just left in there as questions to consider as part of the master plan process. I didn't know if anybody wanted to discuss these or talk about them tonight. We kind of have. You know, some of them relate to exactly what we've already been talking about. Um, so I can skip that portion and we can just kind of talk about next month's assignment. Um. But I guess I've been curious from you all, did you find it interesting? Was this helpful?
Yeah.
Was this what you were hoping for with the group review and the planner's assessment? Cuz.
I think it was good. I didn't, I don't think I gave that many comments because I wasn't really sure what I was commenting about, but now I have a better idea. I mean, I read it all and I thought it was really informative, but I hadn't, I hadn't read it before, which I really should have. I enjoyed rereading the master plan and remembering all the conversations.
Yeah.
Yeah, and it's like, oh, yeah, how did we get there? What was everybody saying that really felt important?
Yeah, that's really.
Yeah, you were, because you were on the steering committee.
Yeah, that's a very valuable background to have if you ever need to bring up anything that was discussed. All right, well, the next assignment is for part two, part three, and part four. And we're kind of digging into quite a bit with like future land use map and.
Two, three, and four. There's a table.
The community values. So just the section that's labeled April meeting there in the middle.
And it was written, the assignment, the whole assignment for the whole thing was written up in our packet.
Yeah, yeah. So if we can stick with that, that'd be great. If not, totally fine, you know, um. I don't know, something comes up or we have a couple of people absent in April, so my thought was if we don't have a. Development application that requires planning commission.
Let's get a, who, who won't be here in April? I know Pam said she could possibly do Zoom. John said he'd be gone.
No, I can't, no.
You're gone?
No.
No, you're gone. You're gone.
I might be able to zoom, but it's a pretty.
Okay, Russ? Well, you're not.
Actually.
Well, actually, yeah, that all depends.
Okay.
Yeah.
So, uh.
I'll be here.
Bill, Jack.
What is it? I'm here, twenty-third. What, what is it on April?
Alright, just sixteen. And I'm here.
Okay, well, my point, I guess, is if, if this is the only thing that we're discussing in the meeting and we don't have a development. Application, do you still want to have that meeting or would you rather me combine the planner's assessment with the May review?
Um, maybe we can continue the assignment, like do the one for April and then you can decide if we're having a meeting or not. And if not, then we still do the one for May.
Right, everybody should still keep reading. By that timeline and yeah, okay.
So you want to send it out, send out the April assignment?
Yeah, yeah, and this is also linking to it.
Okay, I know it sounds silly, but I appreciate the, I'll put it back in front of my eyeballs.
You want the full presentation?
Yeah, you need to share this again.
Yes.
Yeah, can do. Um, so this just breaks down how many pages each of those sections are, but. We might, and I'll talk with TJ about this, but we might want to dig into the future land use map. A little more intensely in light of economies of place thing, the Lot Three P U D thing. Um, just make sure we're covering everything that we should be covering and that it's lining up with what we actually want.
What's the Lot Three P U D thing?
How was that concept plan that we reviewed?
That's about remotes?
Yeah.
Okay, I didn't notice that was Lot Three. I thought Lot Three was across the street.
Yeah, that, that's the Lot Three P U D.
Whatever, what happened with them? I guess, who, who taught them, maybe you taught us?
Um, can you, uh, schedule an email to go out the day of your presentation to remind everybody?
The day of my, of the twenty-seventh?
Decker.
Okay, yeah.
I put it in my calendar.
There's no formal presentation, but.
Right.
In there.
But no, I think it's great for the.
Free food? Free food, man.
Yeah, it's gonna be amazing. It's gonna be awesome. I have a lot of fun activities.
I was wondering if, um, this, since this is for the community, I just. I was wondering if we could ever have, um, some kind of discussion. I don't know how people would show up or not, but for the people that. Were here but don't live here and their, um, ideas or what they think about.
That's a good idea.
They're invited.
That's a good idea. How do we get those people?
But I don't know how to contact them either. I guess going to, going into businesses and saying, hey.
Well, if we put up these flyers where they work, that'll help. So I'll put one up in Greenwood's. I'll put, I'll try to get some around town.
We should actually put some, some strategic Montrose places too.
Yeah, that's, yeah.
And you're right.
Coffee shops.
Because people, this is still a community.
Yeah, community.
Community.
Commuting.
Yeah, any help you all can give at getting the word out would be much appreciated. Um, Susan Lacy is gonna put it in their school newsletter because it's a family-friendly event and, uh. Katie enough has it on their website. We have it on our website, um. Probably send it to the chamber so they can put it on Instagram and stuff, but I don't know what else beyond that.
I posted it on Facebook.
And it was attached to the director referral that went out to all the folks that got a copy of seven, seven and the guidelines, which are mostly like. The development community, Realtors, um, if you send it to like land type of people and then other people working in housing in the area. So we had some RSVPs already, which is great.
What about sending it to the previous steering committee? I mean, there were what, twelve, fifteen of us?
At least.
Or more than ten.
Yeah.
Yeah. Um, there's all this stuff who was on that steering committee.
Okay.
Um, because what, yeah, it's just, they may go, oh, yeah, let's revisit that. Or at least talk about it.
Okay. Are you good? Yeah, um, we have a couple of other items. But I don't have any to share on here. Um, if you want to talk more about it or like how this process went, that'd be cool, but. There we are. Seems like everybody was fine with. The length of sections to review, getting the notes to me on time so I could put them into this presentation.
Okay, Angie, for the minutes, what date did you want those notes by?
April seventh. April seventh.
April seventh, thank you. The Monday before. Or something.
Um, I need a motion to approve the minutes from January twenty-eighth. Um, can we vote on both of them at the same time? Okay, uh, all those in favor?
Second?
Um, both Jennifer and Bill, so whoever.
You just.
Julie wanted. Jennifer. Um, and then I need a motion to, uh, so they passed unanimously. I need a motion to approve the minutes from the meeting February nineteenth.
Actually, I abstained.
Thank you.
There.
You abstained from the January one?
Yeah, because I was.
Thanks, Russ.
I have one minor edit to the, um. The February nineteenth, one, just, just for clarification, the, um. I think it's in the first paragraph on page one, the work sessions, number two, concept review, proposed development. In the last sentence, there's a comment that says specifically with the large percentage of housing proposed on. One of the last remaining commercial properties in town. That should read, one of the last remaining large commercial properties.
Yeah. Perfect.
Minor edit, but there, there's plenty of commercial properties. There just aren't many that.
Thank you. A motion to approve with that change?
Second.
You don't say I, that's been, I'll second it.
Okay. Um, all those in favor? Anyone abstaining? Motion passes unanimously.
When's the May planning commission meeting? It's the fourteenth through the twenty-first.
It's always.
Third Wednesday. Um, are there any updates from Planning Commission? Uh, there's one update. So I start on town council in April, so next month. And then I'm hoping to be the council-appointed planning person. And then Russ would then be, uh, applying for my public at large, I think. Is that what?
Yeah.
Uh, position. So the makeup of the, uh, planning commission wouldn't change if those things happen. But we, there, we'll have to, it'll have to play out.
What about chairperson?
I don't, I don't know where that stands.
It shouldn't, shouldn't need to change. Basically, um, Michelle will be taking Russ's position as the. Ex officio council member on planning commission. I don't see any reason why. You know, I, I, so I think. Whether I have to.
I'll just have to talk to Preston whether.
My information. Talks about whether we, we ask her if anybody wants to be chair instead. I, I don't think there's.
I talked to Bob about it. He didn't think it was appropriate, but it was just casual.
I have a meeting with Senator Bo later this month, so we'll have that conversation. And then I would recommend that we would wait to appoint a chairperson until my vacancy is filled. Meaning Russ is back on the planning commission, so he probably won't be at the April meeting, but if all goes as hoped, it would, he'd be back by May.
Well, and just to be clear, what Russ has to do is put a letter of interest in. And we have to open it up to the public and see if anybody else wants to put in a letter of interest. And then I get to choose if there are more than one, there's more than one.
Now, does that switch to town council? Because weren't they gonna, what they wanted to do was they wanted to shorten the terms and it's in their strategic goals, um, for this year to look at that.
Town charter still says that the mayor gets to choose.
Oh, but her question was shortening the terms.
Oh.
No, I, I thought that selection process changed.
Just, just shorten the terms and that hasn't been.
For that change, it would have to go through the voters, I believe, to, to, to change the town charter, right?
Not sure. Potentially.
I've been reading up on it. You're getting ready. Yeah, good for you. Congratulations.
So we, we may be.
I think you're nuts, but that's okay. My opinion. Well, I'll let you know if I agree. And we'll miss the dog. Well, I'll still be here. Oh, you'll just be as the liaison.
Shouldn't have to change things.
I don't know that. Right here.
Okay.
At large.
So we'll find out. I don't think you. You do what, uh, I can't imagine doing town council and charity, but that's, just running a meeting. Okay.
Yeah, I, I'm not sure why.
Oh, I don't have an issue with it.
I don't think it's.
I don't think it's either.
Okay, good.
Personally, but here.
I get more anxious about not in charge. Any other updates?
What about a hundred and ten year old town? What, did they die?
They have not come back with any adjustments to the proposal. I don't know what went on with their purchasing.
No communication?
I don't think they purchased it.
Right.
It'd be the month.
Because they're bare, yeah. And, and I apologize if I came across strong, but I advocate for this community. And sometimes I just speak up pretty clearly, but I, I care about this community and I.
I think we just have to be careful of not like going into the viability of a project, because that's not what they're here for. Or the planning commission, right?
Right.
So obviously it, it overlaps a little bit, but.
Yeah, I don't care about their business plan.
Yeah.
I care about what this town needs.
I think we can ask questions about things like their business plan.
Absolutely.
Um, but yeah, we, we shouldn't be making proclamations about whether or not we think they're viable.
Or what could be viable there, because we don't really know.
I don't care if they're viable.
Well, if they're visiting ceremony, they, it might not be viable to us, but it could be viable to them.
Yeah.
Maybe all the taxes are tax write-off.
Maybe they got more money than they, they just.
Yeah, it's viable to them, but it doesn't do us any.
But if it's not what we want or need, then that makes.
Yeah, exactly.
Yeah, that's where I go.
They might just need a place to park money.
Do we know, um, what the River Project is bringing as businesses? Because I haven't heard.
What's the question?
Um, the new Weber Development. Thank you to whoever wants to rent those spaces. And nobody's.
They're, they're closely close to being.
To being.
Available, as far as I can tell. I don't know what's taken them so.
Probably some more pot shops.
Maybe a liquor store, a real estate house.
You know, once somebody stopped me and they said, oh, where, you know, where are you from? We're just having a conversation. I said Ridgeway. They're like, oh, yeah, the town with all the pot shops. And I just was like, oh, my God.
I, I don't.
That just.
We're down one.
We're down one, yeah. This was when we had like three or four. Well, what is, no, isn't there still one down on?
Yeah, yeah.
But there's one here.
One over here.
Kind Castle was down by.
The bank? There's one by, on Palabino.
They're still there.
And there's one in these.
Way is the one that's by Alpine Bank, that was by Alpine Bank.
Yeah, but there's, so there's two.
There's three.
I think there's three.
There's three. But we are down one.
You know, it's just like, if you want to crush me for a day.
I don't have my hammer. Oh, boy.